Good evening, Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Medfield Zoning Board of Appeals, acting tonight as the permit granting authority pursuant to Chapter 40B with respect to the application of 86 Plain Street LLC for the 40B project known as Wender Estates. I'm Jack Igles, the Chair. The sitting members of the panel are Christine Barton and Jared Gustafson and William McNiff is sitting as the fourth member of the panel. By way of background, this is a meeting, this is not a continuation of the hearing for anyone who hasn't attended prior meetings or wasn't at the most recent one last week. The hearing was closed as we approached the 180th day since it was opened, at which point we are required by statute to close the hearing. So the hearing was closed at the last meeting on September 25th, I believe, last Thursday evening. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the board to deliberate on the application and all of the evidence and testimony that's been presented to the board over a series of, I believe, eight public hearings, plus a site visit and a viewing of Plain Street. It wasn't a formal site visit. So been a lot of time devoted to this. Again, just for clarification, the hearing was closed on September 25th. It was announced at the closing of the hearing that no further written or verbal oral testimony or evidence would be taken into consideration. I will just note that there was a letter emailed to Maria on Friday, I believe, the day afterwards, directed not to the board but to me as Chair and also to the Chair of the Conservation Commission. That letter was rejected and the sender is free to send it to the Conservation Commission Chair if they choose to do so. But as we indicated, we are not taking any further evidence. So the purpose tonight is for deliberation among the board members as to whether or not to write a special permit and if a permit is being granted to determine what waivers would be granted as part of the permit and what conditions would be attached to any permit. Also present and there will be no further input from the applicant or from our Tetra Tech who are peer advisors to our peer reviewers for the board. And there is no further public input or participation as I believe I announced at the last meeting, the format for this meeting, since it's being conducted solely virtually via Zoom, the chat feature has been or will momentarily be disabled so that no one is tempted to post any questions that or comments that will be ignored if they were to get there. So you know, no raising of hands because that also will be ignored. Not trying to be difficult, but the hearing is closed and purpose tonight is for the board to deliberate. If we reach a conclusion tonight, then that'll be great. But with the amount that's in front of us, we've scheduled a second date, which if we need to continue the deliberations, we will get to that as we get toward the close of the meeting tonight. Also present for the deliberations is Paul Attorney Paul Haverty, who is the legal consultant and advisor to the board. He's not attorney for the town or to represent the interests of the town. His function is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but function is solely to advise the board as to legal matters relative to the Chapter 40B process and also assist greatly, capital A, all caps, in the drafting of the decision which the board would then ultimately execute.
That's correct.
That's correct. Thank you. I think there was some misunderstanding along the way as to your role, so I wanted to put that out there. Also present is Maria Della Fuente, who is Director of Land Use and Planning and who has been just the way to put it, the last meeting, because I can't possibly list everything. I forget something, but basically done everything to support and advance and, you know, make all of these meetings happen and be the gatekeeper for all correspondence and communication between sessions and just an integral part of the process. And we have four members who have been sitting throughout the process. Myself, Jared and Christine will be the voting members. Bill McNiff is the alternate non-voting member, but other than not having one of the three votes in the ultimate determination here, Bill has been a full participant in all of the meetings and discussions and will continue to be part of the discussion and deliberation process tonight and any other nights that it continues to. And finally, I would note that this is an open meeting, so therefore it is open for all to watch. I expect, I haven't looked, but I expect we have a few folks that might be interested in watching this evening and also it will be available relatively soon, Maria, right? On the town website for viewing or for anyone who is interested.
It'll be posted to Medfield TV's YouTube channel for streaming. It's publicly accessible.
Okay. So I think that's all of the introductory procedural matters. Have I missed anything, Paul?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. So purpose of tonight, and I think I said at the last meeting and was prominently quoted. But it's true that the only the only group that really hasn't had an opportunity to discuss this or express opinions and really review it and talk has been the members of the board. It's very difficult within the hearing process when you're trying to allow for a presentation and peer review and technical back and forth and leave ample time, which I hope and believe we did for public input and dialogue throughout the process. It's very difficult for the board to really, other than asking questions, to have any conversation. So my three colleagues may be more clairvoyant than I am, but I have really no idea what the three of them are thinking relative to this project. So we do have as an outline, a draft decision that Paul put together, which would be a typically formatted comprehensive permit decision containing waiver requests, actions and conditions and findings of the board that at this point has been circulated only to the board members and is really at this point, I think, fair to say, an outline of how the discussion might go if the board is inclined to be looking at a comprehensive permit with conditions to basically walk through the various steps and you know, take what is just an enormous amount of correspondence and plans and data and input and help us try to digest it and condense it. But before we get to that discussion, and I've thought about this a lot since we closed the hearing on Thursday, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to have the threshold discussion as to whether or not a comprehensive permit should be granted for this project. You know, whether there is any opposition to that, any sentiment to that, we've discussed it you know, with the butters and, you know, the dialogue throughout the hearing and I guess it comes with the role of the chair trying to maintain control and, you know, and manage the dialogue that is among the board. I have done the vast amount of talking which I really would like not to do tonight. So you know, we have a comprehensive permit seeking to put 24 units on a property that is we might say environmentally challenged with some safety concerns created by the location of the existing driveway and even the relocation of the road as some borderline safety concerns. So I would throw it open first, I guess, to the three of you as to what your feeling is on you know, or in questions for Paul, because I know we've talked about the impact if we were to deny you know, what the repercussions of that would be and trying to weigh those against the regional need for housing. So with that, I really will shut up and who would like to speak? Jared, Christine, Bill? Don't be bashful, please.
I mean, we're just in a situation where we are under the 10%. So we are, you know, we are in a situation where we have to entertain these 40B developments. I do feel that it is a very dense development. There's a lot of units on an area where there's a lot of resource areas. You know, there's not a lot of upland. You know, I was driving around town to see like what other type of developments would be similar, you know, to something like that in terms of like the width of the road, the kind of like distance between all the units and like you drive by Medfield Meadows, like on North Meadows and you go in and they have like kind of dead end lanes too and it's like narrow site drives. Similarly, even like the McCarthy Park ones. You know, you kind of there, I think you can do like a full loop around. There's not really like dead end aisles, but they're all like still very close together. You know, all the, and I think those might be like townhouses. So I'm trying to imagine like even though there are two townhouses, that would be like one house.
Did you say the park?
One house. Not the park. It was, it's like the, it's the one by McCarthy Field across the street from the Fields.
Oh, okay.
I don't know the name of it. Like, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, yeah, those are.
And I feel like that those site drives are like around 20 feet too. It just seemed like a very similar like dense setting. And then lastly, the one by the age restricted one by the Kingsbury Club, you know, could that, I mean, that, that's also like all the how the units are very close together. There they have like a big circular drive, so it feels like a little more, you know, there are sidewalks all around. It seemed and they have like, they have like circular cul-de-sacs on that one. So, I mean, we do kind of have that type of density in town, you know, with those particular, there might be other, other other projects too, but those were the ones that I specifically drove around to see like what it, what it would be like and and so we have that.
Think those were all 40Bs, right? Jack, if I'm not mistaken, everyone you just mentioned, Christine. So there's obviously a common theme here.
Yeah, yeah. I think like where this one might be a little different is that these are like individually like house units, whereas I think like the McCarthy Field one, I can't remember the name of it. Is they're townhouses and I think like the Medfield Meadows are townhouses and then similarly with the 55 one by Kingsbury, I think those might be townhouses too. So but you know, so we do have kind of similar develop, you know, we do have similar developments like that. So you know, maybe the locations might be a little bit better because they're not exactly, you know, the one by McCarthy Field, that's, you know, there's that seems like a good, you know, here it's just a little more congested. I guess it's you know, with, with Plain Street and it being like a narrow road like, like that. So but I feel that, you know, with respect to the traffic concerns, you know, if we put, it didn't seem like the police chief was getting, didn't seem like there were concerns. They met all the ASHTO standards. If we do kind of like traffic calming measures with signs or flashing beacons or whatever, that that could address any kind of speed. There weren't a lot of accidents on their road. I understand that it is a very narrow road because I do, like I live around there, so I walk in that area a lot and it is narrow and cars can go fast down that road, but you know, with some of the safety measures and the traffic calming measures that we have in our condition, I think that that can alleviate some of that. And then similarly with, you know, the stormwater and then the wetlands, you know, I, it's so technical that I don't understand like everything, but I just have to rely on our professionals that say, you know, and, and that say that it's okay and that, you know, so I have to rely on them because I don't understand every single technical detail of that, but they say that it's okay. And if we can condition it so that it is okay and acceptable, then, then, then I'm good with that too. I mean, those are just my initial thoughts right now.
Are you talking in terms of the Tetra Tech?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have to rely on our consultants and if they feel like what the applicant has suggested in terms of mitigation or answers to some of the concerns and they feel that that's acceptable, then I, you know, then I trust that.
Well, I think you, you have to trust it. I think it's a good point, Christine. You have to trust it for a number of reasons, but number one is because then it's appealable, right? If we said no, but then the, the requirements have been met, right? Then we just don't have a footing to stand on. And I'm talking specifically about the safety. On the environmental piece and I don't want to cut you off, Christine, if you want, if you had more to add at this point. I think just to level set with the committee on the environmental piece, it's been a little bit, I don't want to say confusing, but there's been a lot of questions because there is also the board of health piece that's going to potentially happen after this. So maybe we should level set on kind of what we should be considering when it comes to the environmental concerns versus what they are going to touch on, because I know there's been some concerns raised about the septic, but I think that's going to be a board of a health discussion and that discussion has already started a little bit. So Jack, maybe that would be helpful for the committee just to think about, all right, what, what environmental concerns should we be focused on that are really falling under our determination versus what is going to then go to the board of health for them to really dig into? I think that might be helpful for everyone to level set.
Yeah, because we'd also have the conservation.
The conservation piece.
Yeah. And then maybe we also put in our, as a condition that it's subject also to the, the Kongkong approval, you know, the DEP getting an order of conditions and, you know, beyond all appeal periods and that.
Christine, lean forward when you talk. You get very faded when you go back. Thank you.
And then, you know, like the, we should can put in our condition that it's subject to, to getting a order of conditions, you know, beyond all applicable appeal periods and litigation and then also like the board of health approving it as well. Like that should be part of our conditions.
Okay. So, Bill?
Yeah. So I've done a lot of 40Bs. This is probably the longest one I've been on because I think it has been pretty complicated. For my opening saw, I'll just keep it high level, but I mean, I think we all, I agree with what my two board members have just said 100%. I think some of the things I thought about was some of the emails we got from the, the neighbors who I, I respect their passion they had for this project. You know, I think they truly do care about their, their, their street, Medville in general. I know that one email kind of said that we should reject this project and, and take our chances. And I figure, I feel like we, we kind of heard that before when I talked to Maria about when this went from the planning board and that's how we got from a nine to 24 unit project. And in my opinion, there are safety issues and there are environmental issues, but I also have the utmost confidence in Paul when he says that it's a very high standard we have to meet to offset the need for affordable housing. And finally, in my opinion is, and I'm kind of leaning the way I vote, even though I don't have a vote, is I feel rejection might be the easy way out for us. We reject it, we wash our hands and say, yeah, you know, we did the best we could and we take our chance with the state and see what happens. But I didn't take this position to always take the easy way out. And I feel like my opinion is we as a board should do what's best for Medfield and, and have as much say as we can in projects like this when, when there are legit concerns. And so that's how I kind of feel like where we might should, should go tonight.
Yeah, I think, Bill, that that same email that, or a letter that, you know, suggested we should reject it, that would be the right thing. And if it gets overturned at the Housing Appeals Committee, then we did the right thing, but I believe it was the same email. We, we have so many letters.
Yeah.
And again, I, as I expressed at the closing of the hearing, and I agree with you that we certainly respect and appreciate the the, the passion. You know, those, those in opposition, but I think the same, the same letter at the end also suggested that, you know, kind of whatever bad might transpire really then fell in the laps of the board that approved it. So if we deny it and it gets approved by the Housing Appeals Committee and there's no further oversight by the town, then isn't that in fact an approval where we've given up all control?
Yeah.
To just say that somewhat rhetorically.
And, and they also had said, and by the way, I don't disagree with the comments that the neighbors are saying. In fact, I kind of agree with it, but I remember one comment was like, you know, if this wasn't a 40B project, would we approve it? I feel like that's like me saying, the only reason I'm not in the NBA is I stink at basketball. Like this, this whole project is 40B. Like, and you cannot, you can't think of it that way. You know, it's, it's the most important component of this project. I just don't think we, we can think that way.
But and as you said previously, and we heard very early on because I asked Sarah Lemke, who was then Chair of the Planning Board to appear at our meeting and kind of give us the background on what had been proposed before and, you know, if if, if this weren't a 40B project, would it be approved? You know, probably not. Because it's a much higher standard when you're applying all of the town bylaws and planning board regulations and all. But as I believe was part of the testimony that night was that, you know, there was ardent opposition to what was a nine unit development on a longer road. And so the, you know, planning board isn't going to go forward considering a project like that where there is such, you know, vocal opposition from the, you know, from the neighborhood group. So you know, the result and I believe in that the representation was made that, you know, the folks were told at that point, the result may be a, you know, 40B project. And if I remember correctly, I believe I also asked Steve Gard, the, you know, developer or the applicant, you know, would there be any consideration to, you know, from the outset, making this a little less dense project? Something more along the lines of, you know, if, if you had nine units that were rejected, you know, and you do 12 and three of them are affordable, you still end up with nine that turn a profit. So percentage wise, you know, and it's kind of doing it without a calculator, without taking my shoes off. You know, the math, but but I believe, you know, you just very calmly, rationally said, no, we've decided this is the project that we're going to propose. So I mean, I guess the the, the flip side to me to all of this is this, this has been the project. There's no bending. It's extremely dense. There are environmental concerns that probably can be addressed in the Conservation Commission hearing. You know, and they, after a notice of intent, you know, if they're you know, their hearings for an order of conditions because they can act under the State Wetlands Protection Act. You know, there may be sufficient protection for the wetlands there. You know, the driveway, when you, when you look at the plans, particularly the latest one that was submitted Thursday night, basically showing the 50 foot non-disturbed zone and the 100 foot buffer zone around the Vernal Pool. And there's you know, debate over what's the definition of the Vernal Pool and the area around it. And I agree with Christine. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'm not you know, an environmental expert. You know, in many ways, the biggest flaw in the 40B process is to ask lawyers and non-engineers who usually make up the zoning board of appeals in any town to make all these highly technical decisions in an area that we have absolutely no you know, professional or practical understanding. And we can only rely upon, again, what our, what our, what the applicant is presenting and their engineers and their experts reviewed by our technical review and the guidance of our you know, legal consultant relative to how it measures with 40B. But I mean, basically, when you look at the plans, the the existing driveway is pretty much within the Medfield no disturb zone, within the 50 feet, clearly within 100 feet. The 100 feet from the Vernal Pool goes into the Wiener's land next door, if I'm reading the plan correctly. You know, so basically in order to meet the site stopping distance, they have to relocate the driveway to exit at the very corner of the lot, right up against the adjacent lot, have to do further disturbance and work within the wetlands. To accomplish that, then they barely accomplish it. We've kind of swept aside the intersection site distance because it's an aspirational standard. If we get to crafting a decision here, I would like that at least mentioned in there that even though it is aspirational, they're nowhere close on that, as I recall. And so in, in order to meet the site distance, which would have been a deal stopper, they have to remove trees, maintain, cut down and maintain vegetation on the street. That's after moving the driveway exit to the corner of the lot, which is going to involve construction and disturbance within, you know, 50 feet of the wetland. I think they're, they had it down to, you know, 20 or 25 foot buffer zone. And there was debate with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, you know, relative to the buffer zone versus a no disturb zone. And I, I, I do get the sense that it's more than a distinction without a difference, that they're really two different things. On that they're really two different things. And as Deb Barrow said, you know, when you start talking about doing construction, just rebuilding the road, they can't even bring in the big pieces of house to build the houses until they build the road and like can you build an entire road from one side and never go to the other side with any of your equipment? I don't know. You know, so I mean, the the more I thought about it, the more I just, it's it's like it's like totem pole waivers to get to the point that they can meet the safety standard. And those waivers all impact you know, on the wetlands and the Vernal Pool to create a twenty-four unit project, which then brings us to the other side of the you know, of the coin that we've been flipping for the last six months, which is the regional need for affordable housing. Maria, you you have the figures and I I and I know they were sent to someone.
Yeah.
In re- in response and
I have the fresh figures I re- I went through all of it again this morning, if you would like to hear them for the record.
The re- the record has been closed and we have brought these figures up on the record, but for purposes of refreshing our memory for deliberation purposes, yes.
Um, so our year-round housing unit stock is four thousand four hundred and thirty-two units. Ten percent of that is four hundred and forty-three. Um, counting Plain Street, counting the six units of Plain Street, we get to four hundred and twenty-five subsidized housing units, which leaves us eighteen units short of the required four forty-three.
So right now we have um
We have four nineteen right now.
And I did do the math at one point, but I think it moves us from like nine point four five to like nine point five roughly.
I'll leave the math to you.
And and the the just understand the forty-four thirty-two, that was the figure as of the twenty twenty census, which basically is the number that is then used for ten years.
Correct, yes.
So the fact that you add twenty-four units doesn't change the math. To have to do the ten percent based on now forty-four fifty-six.
I believe that that number of total units might only be adjusted every ten years.
Is that correct, Paul? I believe.
You're muted, Paul.
Paul, you're muted.
No, that is correct. It's every ten years that gets adjusted.
Right, so the the base number doesn't change.
And until the new census is official.
Twenty thirty.
Correct.
It'll be a new board then. Maybe not. This group's been around for a while.
I don't think the most recent census became final and official until twenty twenty-three, maybe?
Yeah. That's when I just started here.
Sounds about right, because for a number of years, we were in the the half of one percent per year increased safe harbor. Even though we were, you know, approving projects because that was continuing to add to the inventory. So I guess with with we're that close, which brings me, and I I know I've brought this up repeated times, but it brings us as Marissa, right now, we're twenty-four units away. The six units here, we're still eighteen units away from the ten percent. So we're and with Wizard of Oz like dropping twenty-four houses on this lot with a road at least, if not their structures themselves impacting staying general, you know, impacting wetlands. And um, you know, the well district, I mean, all of the things that have been brought up during the hearing and in order to do that, to reconstruct the road, to even be able to get that stuff in there to build the house, you know, through the corner of the lot to barely create site distance. So all the way along, I've seen the issues as you know, pretty significant safety issues and then environmental issues and you're piling one one upon another in the environment in order to be able to create a safe site distance, site stopping distance. The result of which is if if we thought of that for a moment as all the negatives, the result of which is a little bit of movement on our glacial quest, glacial speed quest to get to ten percent. So and Paul, you've you've mentioned um I believe at least once in the hearing that the Housing Appeals Committee views weighs, ways, the closer you get to ten percent, the more the the scales are tipped in
Yes.
supportive of potential denial.
Yeah, if you want, I can read that provision of the regulations. Seven sixty C M R fifty-six point zero six subsection three. A stronger showing shall be required on the local concern side of the balance where the housing need is rel- relatively great than where the housing need is not as great. Unfortunately, there really isn't any decision of law interpreting that, so I can't really tell you you know, the history of cases in which it's been, you know, determined to 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 tip the scales in favor of a town. Um, what I will say is that I'm not familiar with thi- thi- this provision ever having been cited by the H A C previously.
Paul, do you mind reading that one more time?
Of course. It says that a stronger showing shall be required on the local concern side of the balance where the housing need is relatively great than when than when the housing need is not as great. So basically, they're gonna weigh it, you know, a little more towards the town's favor, the closer you are to ten percent, but there's there's no examples as to how that actually plays out in in real life.
So essentially that provision to your knowledge, and I know you've been doing this for a long time and dealing with the Housing Appeals Committee on a regular basis, as recently as last Thursday.
Last Friday, actually. Wednesday through Friday.
All right.
Follow-up question, question this, Jack, unless you have something, then I'll
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna say that um as far as you know, that provision hasn't really been, for want of a better term, tested.
Correct, and I I know of a number of cases where the Housing Appeals Committee has ruled against local boards that were close to the ten percent. So I I don't know if if that was raised by any of the parties during those particular hearings or whether they just overlooked it. Um, but it has not been used to justify upholding a local board decision that otherwise would not have been upheld.
And I guess the issue too is, you know, the what level do the local concerns rise to? I mean, they they seem pretty valid, but you know, it anyway, um, go ahead, Jared, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna add. Isn't it true that the development that's proposed at the old hospital also has a component of affordable housing? So when that goes through, will easily be over the ten percent. Obviously, things can change with the new census. And could that, can the argument be made that our needs are less because we have something lined up and I don't know at what point in
No, so so the determination of consistent with local needs is based upon the time that the application is filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anything that happens after that is completely irrelevant to this process.
Even if the project is already in motion, right?
Yep.
Cause it's not far enough that long, okay, that's what I, that's what
If if they filed their application the day after this application was filed and you completed your hearing process and issued a comprehensive permit already, wouldn't matter as it applies to this project, you are still in the same place you were when the day they filed.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Little bit of a hail Mary here. Can the the does the state ever take in consideration? So I I I think the key, the key is the need for affordable housing, right? Is that kind of like the what the state looks at? Does a town has a need for affordable housing? So if we have four hundred and nineteen currently units that are forty B, do they ever look and say, well, fifty of those are empty right now? They're not, they're not being used, and I don't know what we have in this town. I don't know if we if all four four hu- four hundred and nineteen have residents in it, but do they ever look and say, well, there's not really read that need right now because there's plenty of photo forty Bs that are available? Or is that need just
To my knowledge, no. That that's, it's never come up, I, it seems unlikely that there would be that many that are unoccupied. Um, but it it's not something that's come up in in a hearing before to to my experience.
It goes a good question, Bill, but I think we always have a to these houses once they're available, so I can't imagine there's there's any that are empty at this point, right?
Yeah, I like I said, I'm just
Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah. Good question.
Paul shot it down fairly quickly there.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just the bearer of bad news.
Do we keep do we, do we know how, like, I can, you know, the rates of uh, occupancy for our forty B units, do we ever monitor that in any way, shape or form?
Um, what do you mean, like occupancy?
Yeah, like, you know, four hundred and nineteen is, you know, I know it's not under, it's under ten percent, but to me, that's a decent amount. I was, I was just wondering do we know how many units are, if any, are available? And I agree, a lot of times they do seem to go quickly.
Yeah, they have a pretty quick turnover. We have a regional, we have a shared housing agent with four other towns and there's a waitlist. So there's always demand, it's just a matter of how quickly can you process the application and how quickly can you get a marketing agent to oversee the transactions, but there's a lot of demand.
So Paul, continue to be the devil's advocate here.
I mean, it's really like that these are for sale, if they were all for rent, then we could have counted all twenty-four of them. And then
Yeah. In which case that would meet a significant need. But in um, just looking at page two of your draft decision under governing law, it talks about, you know, this is uh law governing is chapter forty B, the act. And it says, the act promotes regional distribution of low and moderate income, excuse me. The act promotes regional distribution of lower moderate income housing by preventing individual cities and towns from using exclusionary zoning to block construction of such housing. Toward those ends, the purposes of the act are satisfied if, and then it goes into the ten percent or one and a half percent of your land area already has affordable housing. And the other two are relevant book goes to the ten percent. But I I guess I'm I'm trying to balance that with the, no, if you're not at ten percent, it's gonna get overturned. If the purpose is to prevent exclusionary zoning, then if if we were to deny this, it's not exclusion, i- it's it's not directed at the affordable housing units or snob zoning. No one in the neighborhood is saying, we don't want six families of those people living here. You know, that can't afford a regular house in Medfield. I know I'm being overly dramatic and I don't mean to speak for them, but I mean, that but forty B is sort of anti-snob zoning when you research it.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure what your question is, Jack.
Well, no, my my question is if the if it's promoting distribution by preventing individual cities and towns from using exclusionary zoning to block construction of such housing. And that says you've met that requirement if you've got ten percent affordable housing. But how would a denial here based upon the safety concerns that I would still argue are only addressed by exacerbating the environmental concerns to relocate the driveway or the road? How is that using exclusionary zoning to block the construction of affordable housing?
Well, y- your zoning wouldn't allow this project to move forward if it wasn't for chapter forty B. So that would be the exclusionary zoning aspect of of the the puzzle. I I think the fact that you would be pointing to your local environmental laws as a basis for saying that they couldn't move the roadway in order to to satisfy traffic safety concerns, I think, you know, it's gonna be a tough sell to argue to the Housing Appeals Committee that that's an issue of local concern that outweighs the regional need for affordable housing. Um, you've got to be able to point to a specific local concern as it relates to these environmental issues on this site that isn't protected under the Wetlands Protection Act. And and again, the, I'm not aware of a single Housing Appeals Committee decision that has upheld a board denial or approval with conditions based upon denial of waivers of local wetlands requirements. Generally speaking, if a project complies with D E P uh Wetland Protection Act requirements and and obtains either an order of conditions or a superseding order of conditions, that's going to be determined to meet those environmental concerns, unless you can show some sort of unique factor um relating to this specific site that requires those additional protections, you're not gonna be able to to have a decision upheld based on those factors.
Okay, and I, are there provisions in um the State of the Wetlands Protection Act that will address this? Or the conservation will be able to address this?
Well, it's it's within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. They will have oversight of the the notice of intent and su- subsequent order of conditions process. Um, however, if they choose not to grant an order of conditions, there is a right to an appeal to the D E P for a superseding order of conditions, and then there's a whole adjudicatory process that follows that.
And the when when the matter comes before the Conservation Commission on the or with the notice of intent for the order of conditions. It's before us as a forty B project, so we're restricted by the, you know, local concerns versus need for affordable housing that we have
Correct.
discussed ad nauseam. Okay, when it comes
That that decision um criteria is not applicable to the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act. They are subject to the the criteria under the Wetlands Protection Act and there's specific performance standards that are set forth in the Wetlands Protection That are set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act that they will have to meet. If they don't meet them. Then the Conservation Commission would be within their rights to deny an order of conditions.
Good, so if, if we were at six point four, five percent and nowhere near the ten percent. And so we granted a permit. Comprehensive permit. With. One of the conditions being. Approval under the Wetlands Protection Act and an order of conditions with conservation. Then they just treat that as if it wasn't a forty B project and if they deny it, they deny it and there's no recourse. Back to us under forty B.
There, there's no recourse back to you. There is recourse to the D E P for a superseding order of conditions that's completely outside of your process. Anything that happens in front of the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act is not subject to. The limitations that you're subject to under chapter forty B.
And I assume that would be the same with the, um, under, uh, title five for the.
Correct.
Uh, Board of Health with the, uh. Septic system. Designed in that old project.
Correct, exact same scenario.
And one other question, but step probably gone away, someone else start. Is this where we play a commercial?
No, so I think, I, I was just thinking about the line of questions you just had, which I think was helpful, Jack, so. And this is, this is a point I was making earlier in level setting on. What we can do from an environmental concern versus what we're leaving to the, to the remainder of the process outside of what we're controlling. Cause it seems like. We're not gonna get to that threshold that Paul's describing. Where there's something we can point to that's not covered by the Wetlands Protection Act. Right, that we're overly concerned with from an environmental perspective, right? So if we have a level of concern that we think exceeds. The need for local housing, it's gonna be more on the safety side of things, of the two buckets we spent so much time on. Does everyone agree that's fair to say to kind of limit where we're going with this?
I would agree.
Okay. So then I think we should be really focused on the safety concerns and if, if there's anything there that we believe rises to the level that. We should not be moving forward, knowing that again, the environmental side is gonna be reviewed kind of outside of this process. At a pretty, pretty high level.
And that re- and that reminded me of my question. So Paul, you, you mentioned a few times, like, I mean, we, we don't have a landscaping plan. We don't have architectural plans. We don't have lighting plans. We, there's, there's a lot that we don't have in six months because.
You have very limited architectural plans, from what I see have not been stamped by an architect, but.
Right.
These are essentially standalone, single family structures, so it's not as important that as, as it would be. You know, when you're talking about your typical multifamily building, um, it's a lot more complex than a single family structure.
So becau- and, and you mentioned that every, you know, final plans come after the approval and after. Conservation and after the Board of Health and all of those things. So i- is it fair to say? And this is. You know, my word, I guess, that in my head, is it fair to say that this whole forty B process? If we do a. If we grant a comprehensive permit with conditions, this whole thing is basically. A conceptual permit. Otherwise, we're saying that. Something that kind of looks like this at the end. Can be built here as long as everybody else who has authority over other areas that may deny it approves it. I, I just. It, it feels like we're doing a lot of work for something that is.
Yeah.
Doesn't resemble a finished product or give them anything.
The applicant is only required during the course of the public hearing to submit preliminary plans. It does not have to have all of the design features that you would normally see, you know, when you come to a building department and provide. Plans for building permits. Um, I think during the course of the hearing, as is very typical in these proceedings. The plans get greater and greater amount of detail. Um, so that you get to a point where it's, it's more than just merely. Conceptual plans, you've got a pretty decent sense as to what is being proposed. But you're still not getting those final plans until after the, the hearing is closed. A decision has been issued and they're ready to move forward towards building permits. That, that's just how the process was set up.
Okay, so in, in that same vein, if we. Are granting a comprehensive permit with conditions and two of the conditions are. You know, complete approval. You know, order of conditions that, that the process with conservation and also. Final approval under title five, um, by the Board of Health. And I assume we would have conditions. And I must admit, I, my, my real job got in the way today, so I haven't really had the opportunity to read fully through. The. Draft decision. Um, but. You know, whatever other conditions are in there, then. Do the final plans come back to us that we then have to approve or the final plans? My memory is they go to the, they would go to the building commissioner when they're looking for their building.
So you can have the provision that the final plans come back to the board, although that's frowned upon. By the Housing Appeals Committee, they prefer to be the local boards and, um. Departments that would normally review it. So you can have, you know, the requirement, you know, that the final. Sewer plans, you know, go to the sewer department for review. Um, you know, the final building plans are obviously gonna go to the building department. Um, so you can absolutely have that, but it's, it's going to be all one set. And they'll just distribute them to, you know, whichever boards and departments are, are necessary to review them. And again, the, the final plans with the requirement is, is that they have to provide that final plan detail. Um, and they have to be consistent with the preliminary plans that were approved by the board. So you can't come in and make significant changes. You can't move locations of buildings, add buildings, you know, do anything like that. Any, any. Significant changes, um, would require a modification of the permit. So what the, the, the process is only for them to provide additional detail. It's not for them to make changes to the plans.
And the, for those. Viewing at home with the modification pro- process, cause we went through that. Um, Christine, you were mentioning, and it. It was Castle Hill or something at one point. What's, what's the name of the one up on Hospital Road, Maria?
Um, you mean the Larkin Development?
Yeah.
Is that enclave?
No.
Has a name?
I don't know, it had a name. Um, but it, but anyway, there, there were probably. How many requests for modifications on that?
Chapel Hill, right?
Chapel Hill, they changed it though. It's, I think it's enclave now. Of course, yeah, but they had like eight requests, not more.
And the process on modifications is if it's small things, then the. Whoever the three sitting members that night at a zoning board of appeals hearing can do it administratively.
Correct, so you, if they submit a request for a modification, you have fifteen days. To provide written notification as to whether the proposed changed, it changes either substantial or insubstantial. If it's insubstantial, then it's just automatically approved. If it's substantial, then you have to schedule a duly noticed public hearing within thirty days.
Right, but it takes an action of the zoning board of appeals to.
Y- y- yeah, that starts the hearing process, so then you would have.
To determine whether or not, at a meeting, whether or not.
Correct.
It's substantial or insubstantial, but that's basically, we've always treated as an administrative.
Correct, that's what it is, yep.
So we just have to find three people that'll meet some night to determine that.
Right, but it, and it has to be, you know, you have to post it forty eight hours in advance, just like any other meeting.
Yeah.
And then again, if you make the determination that it is substantial, then you have to do notification. Uh, advertise in the paper and, and hold a hearing within thirty days.
Right, unless you make a determination that's substantial and they appeal that to the Housing Appeals Committee. And then we all lose a day of our life. Sitting around in mediation. Which was really fun remotely.
Are there, are there any standards of what's considered substantial?
Yeah.
But they're not helpful. So the, the H A C regulations has a list, and if you give me a second, I can bring them up.
I only raise this not as a digression, but more that. No matter what we do here, I. Will be the most surprised. Guy in town if there aren't repeated. Request for modifications down the road.
So, so the regulation states the following matters generally will be substantial changes. One, an increase of more than ten percent in the height of the buildings. Two, an increase of more than ten percent in the number of housing units proposed. Three, a reduction in the size of the site of more than ten percent. Four, a change in building type, e.g. garden apartments, townhouses, high rises. Or five, a change from one form of housing tenure to another. And then the following matters generally will not be substantial changes. One, a reduction in the number of housing units proposed. Two, a decrease of less than ten percent in the floor area of individual units. Three, a change in the number of bedrooms within individual units, if such changes do not alter the overall bedroom count. Of the proposed housing by more than ten percent. Four, a change in color or style of the materials used. Or five, a change in the financing program under which the applicant plans to receive a subsidy. So of course, you very rarely get anything that falls within those examples, so you just have to sort of do the best you can. Um, when making a determination.
And the, the one that I was referencing for, uh, Chapel Hill, as it was known then, was when they, um. Decided not to finish the second bathroom in the affordable units. And that doesn't fall clearly within anything that Paul just read, but we made the determination. That, that was substantial. Which they appealed and then. Ended up settling on. Some compensation of the folks so they can finish getting the bathrooms. But anyway, um. Okay, and then, and, and. I'm not getting the strong sentiment that we're gonna get a, a motion to deny the permit outright. But one, just one last thing, Paul, in terms of the Housing Appeals Committee, that's an administrative process under.
Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities.
Right. And as I think I may have mentioned, um, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with those processes. It's basically, it's internal. Appeals mechanism within that.
Correct.
Agency.
A- and the E O H L C has a mandate for the creation of affordable housing. So it, it is not a friendly venue for boards.
Right. So you have dealt with it often over the last forty years in the, in the Medicaid context with the Office of Medicaid Board of Hearings. Which actually has become far more objective over the years than they used to be. So they're probably miles ahead of the Housing Appeals Committee, be that as it may. The next step in the process would be, let's, let's say we were to deny it. We go to the, they file in the Housing Appeals Committee, then the board essentially is the defendant. And.
Correct.
One or all of us, plus you or town council or outside council. Um. There's expenditure of time and money to go and try to defend our decision, which you are saying is a. Is an uphill battle and I think we all kind of accept that. Um. But the next level of appeal would then be a, uh, for judicial review under chapter thirty A.
Correct, it's an on the record review.
Right, so the entire record before the Housing Appeals Committee.
Right, so the proceeding before the Housing Appeals Committee is de novo. So you start from scratch, you put on whatever evidence, you know, you decide to put on. Um, the developer puts on whatever evidence it decides to put on. I think I talked about this. Um, at the last hearing and in, in a case of a denial, the applicant has the burden of making a prima facie case. That their project meets, um, state and federal requirements and generally accepted engineering practices. And then the board would have the burden of proof of showing that there's an issue of local concern that outweighs the regional need for affordable housing. In the instance of an approval with conditions that gets appealed. The applicant has the, uh, additional burden of proving that the project, the board's decision renders the project uneconomic.
And then when that decision is made. If they. Voted to overturn our denial if we were to deny it. And it went there, then it would be a judicial review, which is basically the record goes to the superior court. And then you, then the, the argument is, is then gonna be strictly legal argument as opposed to testimony and evidence.
Correct.
At the superior court level, then beyond there, it would go normal appeal to the appeals court of the S J C.
Yep. And again, the, the Housing Appeals Committee's decision is entitled to substantial deference on the appeal. Um, on substantive basis, almost never. Uh, has an Housing Appeals Committee decision been overturned on, on legal issues. You know, in terms of the scope of, of what they're allowed to rule on, there have been a few decisions that have. Overturned the Housing Appeals Committee, but on substantive issues, it's incredibly rare.
Okay, I guess one question, uh, uh, Paul, if you don't wanna answer this, I, I get it. I'm, I'm not trying to. Uh, trick you or get you on the record. I, I know you said we have an uphill battle. If we were to deny this, uh, I think it's important for, for me, I like numbers. Yeah, obviously, it's not a fifty fifty chance, but would you say it's as low as like a ten percent chance of us winning? Uh, you knowing all the facts and what we, what concerns we have and what we would be using to go in front of, of the board? Would you think is as low as ten percent, five percent? Um, if you're not comfortable, I get it. I'm just trying to get a feel of like, when you say uphill battle, how high is that hill?
It's very high. Um, I, I think five percent would be an optimistic figure for you. Um, I, I, I don't see any issue that has been identified, you know, throughout this process. That I have seen a Housing Appeals Committee decision uphold a denial, you know, for a similar type of an issue.
Okay.
Again, i- if, if they were unable to meet that site distance requirement. Then I could point you to Housing Appeals Committee decisions, you know, that say that a denial should be upheld. But on a project that actually, even if it barely meets it, it meets the minimum standards. I'm not aware of any Housing Appeals Committee decision that has ever stated that a project that meets the minimum. Uh, i- is something that can be denied.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that particular topic? So last kiss. Is, is anyone inclined to deny the project at this point?
I, i- in my opinion, it doesn't pass the McNiff smell test. But I don't think Paul can thinks that's probably gonna pass the state board, so I, 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 I don't think I can vote for that. I would. Have to vote to approve it.
Christine, Jared. Can I comment?
Yeah, again, I'm just trying to think of. What, what would our, what would our case be? I can't even, I'm trying to think of best, the best case we can lay out there if we want in that direction. Um, and that only gives us a five percent chance. And then ninety five percent chance we lose all of our conditions, right? Like. Like, the the risk doesn't doesn't, if we look at it as a risk first benefit, right, and maybe it's not that, but. I- it seems like the risk of of a denial is is not, at this point, unless we come up with some other some other logic. The risk of a denial does not seem worth the potential for. The loss of all those conditions. In my mind.
And in the and in the context of our. Our obligation is to serve the best interest of the town. But to do that, making a decision within the confines of chapter forty B, as it is.
Correct.
I think we we don't have to like. The situation because it's certainly a flawed, I mean, it's a it's a great concept, but. Just cur- cursory research, there's so many articles and arguments against. Having forty B as the way to do it. You know, we can see why. Christine, any other comment or?
I mean, yeah, I mean, if we didn't have forty B, none of this would have gotten developed, you know, it would still be. Open, open space, which is really nice, but at the same time, we do need housing. We're we are, we're in like a housing deficit shortage throughout Massachusetts, so. We do need to create more units, and I don't think that the risk of denying it is 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 worth. Um you know, having all of our conditions that we've done to safeguard this development. To protect, you know, to protect it as much as we can, it it's worth it, so. I'm I I'm, my vote is to approve this comprehensive permit.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
My my vote is to approve the comprehensive permit.
With conditions, which we we we're not voting yet, I just wanted to um.
Or that, you know, that's where I'm leaning towards.
Yep, okay, so I just wanted to be clear that there's no sentiment towards. Pursuing the denial.
So I I'll just throw one one more. Thought for discussion, right, so Paul mentioned the stopping site distance, which I think is the most important thing. The threshold has been met. But there's also a bus stop there, right, so I don't think there's any. Ashtow guideline that says if there's a bus stop, the stopping site distance has to be different, but this is something we talked a lot about. So if I put my lawyer hat on and make an argument, which may not be a winnable argument, but I think we should think about. What would be the best case argument and then weigh that versus the risk? The argument might be, we're just meeting the threshold, but there's also. The added complexity of a bus stop being there. I think that would be the best case I can make unless someone else has something. Uh that creates a better argument, and then again, I think we just start at a threshold because then we can debate whether that's. Anything we would even consider, right?
But isn't there the the bus stop there today? It's an existing condition that the bus stop is there?
I think it's already there, yes, it's only picking up like one or two kids now, it would be picking up more, but that's not. A new condition that this project is introducing, I think it's just adding more infrastructure to support it and more kids, but not a new stop per se.
Well, well, I think on Plain Street, my guess is they stop at. At the particular houses because of the way that street is, so unless the people that were living there. Had kids that were still of school age, I would think, I I don't know, but I I wouldn't think that stopped at that exact spot.
It was the house next door we heard from the owner.
Yeah, that they had younger kids.
Yeah, that they had younger kids that stopped.
They do.
Up next door.
They they do, because they have a swing set, I run by it every day, they I've seen the kids. But from a legal standpoint, you could say that's not the same bus stop, right? Like I said, a a street like Plain Street, I've seen it on granite, which is behind me where I live, it's the funniest thing. You have twenty kids in front of the houses that are five feet apart and the bus goes like a foot and picks them up. I'm like, oh my God, these are laziest kids ever, but it's it's a safety issue, so. I I feel like it would be a a new bus stop.
And as for the the. To that point, Jared, I. I recall back when we were in one of the meetings, when we were discussing, you know, the the traffic reports and uh. Courtney and Ian were going back and forth of various issues, we had a. Pretty detailed discussion about, well, if a bus is there, and I think the conclusion that. Was drawn by the the two experts, if you will, the traffic study was that um. The site stopping distance is designed when you, you know, come over the hill and around the corner. To what can you see that in a two foot height, if my memory is correct?
Yeah.
And that even though the bus would be stopped and would be. A bus is longer than six feet, so the site stopping distance from. The measured point to the back of the bus would be less than the required distance, but also that the bus is like. You know, twelve feet high and would be seen a lot quicker.
Yeah, and I remember.
To me, it's a practical matter, I'm, that's why I. Keep harboring back to basically. How's this work for the guy sitting or the woman sitting in the driveway? In the road, fourteen feet back, looking. You know, in this perfect clear sightline except for the telephone pole. At the corner. You know. But. But it but I think then the bus, the bus issue came up, the bus stop issue came up again the night that uh. Deputy Chief McGrath was there. You know, I raised it again. You know, and I think one of you may have also brought it up in terms of, you know, having the bus stop there and the safety issue and we, you know, the. Applicant was quick to point out, well, that was already resolved. So I I.
Yeah, and I remember.
Reaction is from the testimony we have in front of us, I'm not sure that that's necessarily.
Yeah, so I I do remember the multiple discussions, right, so I do remember the argument that the the bus is higher, so you're coming down the hill, you see it quicker. But what about the six cars lined up behind the bus, and I never really got a great response to that, right? So you might see the bus. Earlier than you would see a car if it was parked exactly where the bus was, but now there might be four or five cars parked behind the bus now. To Bill's point, if the if the bus is stopping. At every house on Plain Street, you know, I'm exaggerating, but there could be a decent line of cars behind that bus, right?
Yeah. Yep, I sup- I suppose that one, you know.
So at a certain point, the cars get up the top of the hill and then you see that car, but there's an instance where there's a. Just the right amount of cars where it becomes dangerous, whether it's four or five, right?
Let's say it's not, it's not a bus and it's a uh. On this big old landscaping trucks with the big trailer on the back. That's. Parked right at that point now. To provide landscaping services for the house next door to this one. You know, because they say they park on the street all the time, again, I I know they park on my street, I'm sure. Every street, whatever street you live on, you get landscaping trucks parked there, so arguably, there could be three or four cars. Lined up waiting to go around. That, I mean, it's, you know, it's it's just a tough corner. I mean, I I guess. The neighbor's. Argument on denying the project would be when you take the totality of the circumstances, so to speak, and add them all up, one on top of another.
We we all know there's risks to this project, I I think the problem is, as Paul said, is it meets. This basic requirements and. Once again, I I I drove over that driveway once when we did the site visit, and I almost got hit. Now, I know the driveway is gonna be twenty feet down the road, but I'm like, holy mackerel, you gotta be kidding me, but. They're meeting the basic requirements, I just don't know what we can do, I I I think we all agree there's a dangerous component to this project.
Unfortunately, now I'm arguing, not arguing, but presenting the other side, but I think we. We have to take the site in the street as it is, I mean, they we get into this big thing about. It's only sixteen and a half feet wide and it should be eighteen feet wide and it it just. This the street is what it is and building something on that lot, Paul, right, is is not. Ex- exacerbating already unsafe conditions would not be a grounds for denying a project.
Wait, that's straightforward, the the question is, are you exacerbating?
This is.
Are you exacerbating an already unsafe condition or are you just merely contributing to it? I mean, I don't know that there's any evidence that this is gonna make that condition worse.
Well, other than add adding the uh whatever the traffic study showed, the two two hundred and forty. Trips in and out.
That but that that's not, so the the proposed intersection is not an already existing condition, that's a new condition. So we're not looking at whether or not you're exacerbating an an existing problem. The question is, by creating this intersection, are you creating a problem? And pursuant to the applicable standards, you're not. And and that's the the challenge that you face, e- even though it barely meets the minimum requirements, it meets them. So what are the odds of a decision, you know, that says you can't do this project because you barely meet the minimum standards? Is going to be upheld? And it's, it's not good.
So from the safety perspective, the the. The issue or the comment was made more than one time by more than one person. In the course of the hearings and the written correspondence that we received, that somehow if. Somebody gets hurt. It's some somehow falls to this board for having granted the permit.
Yeah, that's not correct. That's not correct.
I feel it's Paul's fault.
Yeah, let's blame him, my my father said I can't. He won't let it, he won't, he won't let us.
Well, well, I think one thing, uh just to add, um and obviously, Paul's been a great help, um. If we if we were to deny it, uh you know, like five percent is not a a since like a pretty low chance, so but. I don't know about you guys, I was taken aback a little bit by the whole module component of this, because. I feel like if we don't deny it, we approve it and we put all these conditions. O- one thing that really scared me was, and I was trying to think about this. So you have a pretty long street, I don't know, a mile and a half, I'm I'm exactly sure. And now you're gonna have these big trucks coming down with these houses components on them. I I I don't know how we're doing that, because you if if I'm driving the other way. And I'm halfway down the road and this thing comes towards me, I have no place to go, I can't go off to the side. I have a car behind me, I can't, so I I think we gotta think of these scenarios, like, well, how are we gonna control that, because that's just a logistics nightmare. And um. So I think, I I I unless we close down the road, I don't know how they're gonna do that. Suppose a school bus is coming the other way when those trucks comes down, is.
Yeah, I mean.
And the construction hours that were cited were problematic too.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can condition that, and I think with the trucks coming down the road. The the applicant mentioned that there would be a need for a police detail, right, so. Yes, making the assumption that is gonna happen, and then is there conditioned about what time it is, or did or do the police do that themselves, right? Yeah, we'll give you a detail, but it can't be during bus time, maybe that happens already.
And then that's that's I was gonna ask, how how is, have we had this before and how who deals with it, yep.
Yeah, and then I I was actually gonna ask is, I was I was taken aback by that too, but. In the long run, is that is that better off? Because there's gonna be less of these big trucks going back and forth from then from a normal twenty four house development. Right, and we can actually restrict the timing, that might actually be beneficial in the long run, I don't know, but.
I I agree, yeah, it's. I I would just, I mean, that's a long road, I don't know how exactly I'm gonna do it, and then you're gonna have to shut it down. But yeah, I'm I'm not trying to get in the weeds here, but I I don't know if I was, I'm glad you said that, Jack, because I felt like that was just kind of glossed over in our last meeting.
I know that. Sorry, Jack, I know, I I discussed this with um the town administrator briefly today. And they said that we have shut down roads as needed before for large deliveries, and that's something that. The developer could coordinate with the police department, I think it might require select board approval to shut down a road. Uh temporarily, but it is not unheard of.
Maybe we put that as a condition then.
Oh, yeah.
Because basically, basically in conditions, Paul. You know, everything is subsumed into the comprehensive permit. But all of these practical things that we're talking about, if we condition them, we're within our rights to essentially. Transfer them back, as you said, like the plan review and things like that, to transfer it back to the appropriate agency, so in other words. The construction would be totally under the building commissioner and. These issues under the public safety.
Yes, so so you send it back for the submittal of final plans. And those plans get reviewed by whichever local department would typically review that sort of plan. Um you can't defer your approval and you can't delegate it to another board, so you can't say. Um you know, that's this is approved, subject to review and approval of, you know, X plans by X department. Um you you know, it has to be a an approval, and then with a requirement for final plans that contain all of the details. That are then reviewed for consistency with your decision.
Okay, but I mean, how about how about like the, you know, the road closures and things, or whatever would be necessary to. Complete the destruction uh construction.
Yeah.
We can. Basically, subject that, some condition that on approval and control and direction of. The police department, the highway department, whatever appropriate.
Correct, yes. And and the 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 draft decision that I prepared has a provision that talks about the submitting uh submittal of a construction management plan. Um that has to be reviewed by the building uh commissioner prior to commencement of instruction uh construction. Um and that those are the sort of details that would be uh taken care of as part of that plan.
Okay. Yeah, no, I I realized that the last. Before the last hearing, that we hadn't gotten into really any of the nitty gritty and. You know, detail of what the project was, we were so, we spent so much time and and rightfully so. On the the safety issues, because that was kind of a threshold issue. For the process to even move forward, and then the environmental issues are, um you know, of the greatest concern, but. You know, I I honestly felt that through the whole process. At times, not a whole lot was being presented, other than, yeah, kind of here's what we. Think we're gonna do and here's some plans and then there'd be critiqued and there'd be some changes made and, you know, how many times did we redo the traffic? Study and, you know, the numbers and 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 all of that, and so. You know, and and even when we did the site list, that nothing was really staked out, so I I. I feel to a certain extent, we were going through the process. You know. When I closed some of the time, but um. Yeah, so I mean, I'm glad that came out at the hearing and I I. I think it's more cumbersome to get the modular pieces in there. Done insurmountable, and as you, Bill and Jared have just said, uh, you know, in the long run, that may. It's at least been represented to us uh substantially. Cut down on the construction time. Can can we condition, some something that I mentioned, Paul, if um just in passing at the. Hearing, because this was all new information, so had nothing really have been thought out. On my end, but. He was saying they could produce like, you know, six houses in a week in the factory. Can we condition the construction on, you know. Like segmented that get everything delivered and on, you know, in one day or whatever it takes. You know, onsite and then you're out of the way and do whatever you want on your own land if we've. Done the comprehensive permit?
One day might be a li- a little uh ambitious. Um, but certainly we can put something in the decision that requires, you know, the that timing. To be resolved through discussion with the building commissioner.
Yeah, that there be coordination with the town and delivery of the modular homes.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to find a way to.
Developments in town. You know?
I'm not aware of them, although I know that they're becoming increasingly popular for ADUs because it's cost savings. But I'm not aware of it for any other previous forty Bs. That's something where obviously we cannot regulate in our zoning either, so.
Any other comments on this issue?
I I just not to get stuck on this module, but so it does Paul picture saying, all right, you know. And I'm making up things right now. It's like we it can only be done six to seven in the morning, um. No more than twice a week or something like that. Like, I'm just like, wh- what are we gonna put down there as as guideline?
So you you can't impose hours of work conditions different than you impose on unsubsidized housing.
Okay.
Um, I would stay away from imposing any hours of work condition different than you have imposed on the other forty Bs in town. That being said, I do think that you can require coordination with the police department. Uh, as it relates to the delivery of these, because that's different in kind from the other types of work that we're talking about.
So they would have the they would know what's a good time in theory and how often we should be doing it this.
Correct. And if it requires shutting down, you know, the street, you can't be doing that, you know, daily for hours at a time. So, you know, it needs to be coordinated. It needs to be limited. Um, so, you know, that is something that you can discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, it strikes me that this form of construction is probably going to create. A larger inconvenience for the neighborhood and people that use that street. But over a shorter period of time, like measured in months or years. For construction. Yeah, so, all right.
All right. Okay, thank you.
So. Any any further comments or discussion on? Potential denial or are are we in agreement that? We are not going to outright deny the permit. I don't think we have to take a formal vote on that. I just wanted to bring it up is. I mean, this is all deliberation. We'll vote when we vote, Paul, right?
Yeah, i- in my opinion, a a five percent chance, and I think Paul even said that was an optimistic view, is 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 not worth the chance of. Doing a denial. I I don't have a vote, so.
But you have an opinion.
Yeah, I do.
Me too, Bill.
Maria has more opinions than you do per per day, Bill. Which I thought was hard to do when I knew you. You know how Maria tells us to run our other meetings, anyway. Christine.
Yeah, I'm I'm not inclined to deny this comprehensive permit. For all the reasons that we've just discussed for the last hour and a half, you know, and. Yeah, I just. Just denying it and the risk of having it appealed and then. Having that overturned and then not having the benefit of our conditions. Is is isn't, you know, it's it's not worth it.
Jared?
Yeah, I I agree reluctantly, uh, but I think. Once we get into the conditions here, I think it's gonna be even more apparent how valuable they are, right? So I agree.
And I. Concur with all of that. I think we, again, in the context of better serving the town and, uh. You know, doing the right thing, as was pointed out to us on more than one occasion by the loyal opposition. You know, the the right thing for the town is to maintain as much control. Over this project and particularly the uh conditioning. The permit on. The applicant successfully completing the process. With the conservation commission, which could potentially be far more arduous than ours. Um, and getting the title five approval from the board of health, although the board of health has given us. You know, a lot of good conditions and recommendations on waiver requests that basically. You know, they're saying it can't be done if you do it this way, so. You know, and in terms of the opposition, uh, folks that are opposed to this. Um, as I've said at the hearing many times, there's a couple more proverbial bites at the apple. Um, with the board of health and with conservation, so I think. And potentially, if we just did a flat out denial, Paul, that it comes back with minimal conditions, which aren't gonna include. Going to conservation or going to the board of health necessarily.
Well, they they're required to do that no matter what. You don't have any jurisdiction over title five. You don't have any jurisdiction over the wetlands protection act. If they wanna move forward, they've gotta get those approvals irrespective of what you put in your condition. In your decision, sorry.
Right, but if we did a denial and it was overturned by the housing appeals committee. Conditions, but they would still have to go.
Correct.
And I I think for the record, and obviously Paul, you you can maybe just clarify it. Um, we we've been talking about how the developer can appeal our decision. Well, if we approve this. There's an appeal process also, right?
Correct. In in fact, an approval with conditions theoretically could get appealed by both the developer and the neighbors.
Right.
They go to two different uh bodies. The neighbors would go to Superior Court or Land Court and the developer would go to the Housing Appeals Committee.
From my limited experience with. Appeals to each. On these project, the Housing Appeals Committee would continue to require a lot more involvement. By the board or particularly the chair or his designate in that process. Whereas the, um, if we were to approve it with conditions that was not appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. But the neighbors, um, or anyone interested with standing, um. Were to appeal, then my memory is from the, uh. From the one up by Ice House Road, when they appealed that, um. Essentially, the board is out. It's, uh, it's the developer and the.
Pres- presuming it's an appeal that goes uh just to Superior Court or Land Court. Um, so that would be, you know, a a party withstanding taking an appeal of the board's decision. The board and the developer would essentially be on the same side of the V. And generally speaking, in in any zoning appeal, um, towns tend to. Let the applicant carry the the weight on an appeal and they just take a, you know, a inactive role. In the appeal. You're still technically a party. You would be named, um, you know, as defendants in the suit, but you wouldn't actively defend your decision.
You said it much better than I did. I'm still learning the language, but uh, but that was that was my experience. Jared, I think you were on the appeal for the ISO's good one, right?
I was, yeah.
Yeah, I was on that too.
Okay. So other than getting the summons in the mail, it was about the extent of our involvement.
Yeah, my first, my first summons.
Yep.
Just thinking it from another perspective. I mean, if these twenty-four houses are built ultimately. I mean, we're gonna get twenty-four new like community members, you know, that are homeowners. I mean, they're gonna care about where they live. With respect to the traffic, I know that there is, you know, it is. Dangerous or there is a risk, but they're not gonna want their kids getting on the bus. You know, they're gonna take action too if they feel that it is like a dangerous. Situation or condition, cuz they're not gonna wanna put their family in that risk. Similarly, with like the environmental, you know, they're not gonna do. Like, I mean, I would think that they would hope that they would wanna take care of their their condominium. Area, their common areas. So I feel like we haven't looked at that perspective at all as we've been kinda analyzing this. We've been take, you know, seeing it through the eyes of our town, obviously through the butters, but we're gonna get new. People that are gonna be part of our community that could become good friends with, uh, you know, people that have been objecting to this. They could all become good friends and their kids can. Play together, so we're missing that kinda positive outlook on this new development that's coming into our town.
Yeah, I I was thinking along those lines and thank you for bringing it up, cuz I. I was kinda getting bogged down over the last few hearings, you know, of trying to. Juggle all the interests and give everybody a fair say, but I was I was actually thinking this weekend that, um. You know, the comments have been made about how unsafe the street is to ride bikes and, you know, kids. In the development, you know, when they get older, they wanna go out and ride their bikes on the street. Well, they're probably gonna get driven across town to. You know, to someplace else anyway, but I I was thinking that with a sidewalk and a road. Less traveled that. The younger kids along Plain Street would actually have a safer place or neighborhood to go and ride their bike. You know.
And and to Christine's point, and I think attorney guard, and it's a valid point, even though we're we're not moving the needle on our affordable housing. There will be six families that will be moving into Medfield that normally couldn't afford it, and that's obviously the whole point for it being that is also important.
All righty then. So the next phase of the process is we should be begin to consider. An approval. With conditions. Agreed?
Yes.
It is seven forty-five, um. I don't know anyone's energy level, um. At this point, we we should probably start that prime. How 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 long do we wanna go on the deliberation?
I would think seven forty-six.
Well, no, I I I'm wondering if, um.
But I mean, I I did get the draft decision out to everybody earlier today. Obviously, have not had a lot of time to review it and sort of take a look at what additional conditions they think are necessary. Um, so we may be better off just holding off and beginning review of the draft until. Uh, I think it's the ninth.
The ninth.
Um, and and beginning it then, um, so that everyone's had a, you know, full opportunity to review and. Have their comments ready and I think it'll make a, you know, a more fruitful discussion.
Focused discussion and if there's any additions or additional conditions to. Put in there, um, as you mentioned, Paul, um. We can each individually convey to you. Um, additions to be added. To the draft. But not including everyone in the correspondence, cuz we're not gonna violate any open meeting laws by communicating by email. So that. Will have. Or or at least have them ready to discuss because. Remember the old days when we were meeting in person, you'd be sitting there with your laptop drafting as we went along in the meeting. Um.
Yep.
So now you're sitting hopefully in the comfort of your home. Or at least. With your laptop, able to do the same thing. Um.
Yep.
More comfortably. So, yeah, again, actually, may maybe rather than trying to communicate, just if you have additional. Um, thoughts on, um. Conditions, and I think the waiver requests will, you know, we'll go through those and discuss Paul's recommendations, you know. See how we're inclined to handle that, but I, yeah, I I would agree that I think it makes more sense to, uh. This this was very helpful tonight because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss. Just the project as a whole. And so I think it's important for everyone to be able to share their views and thank you all for. An enlightening discussion. Um. So if we start up the next deliberation session. From the perspective of, um. Reviewing and hopefully completing in a couple of hours a, um. Decision, you know, with conditions. Um, hopefully, we can wrap things up in the next session. That make sense to everyone?
Yeah, no, that sounds good to me.
Oh, good.
Good. Well, thank you all, um. I think the next order of business is a motion to close the meeting. Am I correct, Paul? Oh, the hearing's been closed. It's motion to adjourn the meeting to, I'll make the motion. To adjourn the meeting to. There is a October ninth at six P M via Zoom to continue deliberations. On the forty B project at eighty-six Plain Street.
Second.
All in favor? Jared?
Jared Gossips and I.
Christine Barton, I.
Jack McNicholas, I. So the meeting is adjourned.